... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Snyder?
Here.
Bartello?
Here.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Kristine?
Yes.
Is this one everybody's agenda? All right, wait, under unfinished business, we have a 1050-1052 Miller Street subdivision. Mr. Rhodes, can you address that portion?
Yep. Mayor Council, I'm asking for final approval today for a minor subdivision for the Robert and Karen Dempsey property located at 1050-1052 Miller Street. It's a, there was a two-family attached dwelling being changed to a two-single-family attached dwellings. It has been approved by the North Carolina County Planning, the City Engineer, the Sunbury Municipal Authority Water and Sewer, and the Sunbury City Planning.
Any questions?
I'll make that motion and accept that.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Uh, next, a new business, Pennsylvania DOT road closure, five K, ten. Does anybody hear from that? Yes, ma'am. Just give us your name and...
Yes, my name is Tara Michaels and I am a coordinate road races and triathlons and I'm here to ask for your permission to use the city roads for a five and 10K. We plan this for the Shikleme Soccer Booster Club, high school soccer team, and we plan to start and finish at the high school, but of course we need the roads. So I've worked with Chief Mazzio to develop the route. We received approval from the people that coordinate the levee. We've talked to Norfolk Southern and received the okay for them, so now I need your approval. We also have insurance for the event. I just need to pass it on to Penda and I need a letter from you all saying, yes, you'll grant us permission.
Do you want this route closed down or is it rolling?
It would be great if you'd be willing to do that. We expect about, we're hoping, grateful we have about 200 participants, I think realistically between 100 and 150. So, for a brief time, because we do want them to parade down Market Street, we're encouraging people to come in their costumes, so we think it'd be kinda cool for them to come down Market Street. So briefly, we will hold traffic, but I don't know that there's any reason to really stop traffic, hold it for a minute. I have been in contact with quite a few of the fire police, Bruce Collier, I guess. I've talked to, I've sent them a letter. I've also talked to North Carolina Fire Police, John Apple, and one more person from the state community. So I've talked to quite a few of them, they all seem like they'll be willing to help. I've sent those letters, I just haven't had the final commitment yet from them. And we have lots of volunteers that will have out working the course.
And the benefits again, like the Shikleme Soccer?
Sick, Shikleme, yes.
So would those be holding up traffic, put a hook around, you know, or the...
But my issue is, it's a state highway, you're getting, you're gonna have all the permits to, Pen Dot?
Yes, yep, yep. I coordinate quite a few races and have, work with Mary Ginter at Pen Dot, so she's aware of the race coming and she, you know, we have the procedure and we will get them the permit as long as we get your approval.
This business is yours?
Yes.
Chief, can you say, "Rob, hold traffic down one of Market Street"?
I thought the show right, our fire police, and said if this is approved, she'll coordinate with Tara and make arrangements, so we might be issued Pen Dot, because Pen Dot's approval process is extremely long. So we may not be able to shut it down in fire, but we'll be, probably just be there before that. We could probably do something temporarily with the fire police, and then the fire police can figure it out.
And I've talked to Mary Ginter briefly, and just told her, and I think we'll have to hold it for at most 10 minutes, and that's really being, so I don't think that we have to hold it for very long, just kinda... Same way I do this in Lewisburg as well, we go down Market Street in Lewisburg and the police are at one end and they're at the other, and they give us the okay and we parade down, and they just follow the last racer up and then open up traffic. So, and I don't think Mary Ginter, I don't think that they'll have any problem approving the course.
So you're gonna definitely have the kind of approval whatever you get.
Mm-hmm.
No liability issue for us at all, you have insurance?
No, I have insurance, and I gave you a certificate of insurance.
Oh, we need that, yeah, for...
Yes.
Stop all the city, but...
Yeah, yeah, they actually email and, okay, we...
We already have that.
Okay, yeah, they email that out too. So no, and I put, I have a waiver and that says to racers, not seeing this person, that person, you know, everybody and their brother. So I do put that, you would not be liable for that. The permit is, you know, under my business.
I'd like to make a motion that we...
I got more requests. Chief, we're not bringing anybody extra in, stay with that, I put that... For us, now, traditionally events like this, if there's something there, I'll come out myself to represent the department, the ways the fire police that deal with, so we can cross to us as far as...
I'll make a motion, sir.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Kristine?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Are you gonna stick with the whole meeting?
You don't have to.
I'm not sure.
Home, home, you don't have to.
I have the letter.
Okay, yes.
Okay, if you don't mind.
I'd love to see it.
While she's doing that, we're going to the home grant contract services, we'll, I don't know if Mike or Tim are gonna talk, but I guess I'll hold that up.
I agree, I'm like Richard from CDCog and we presented the, our professional service agreement for you to consider to operate another round of federal home lines that you just recently got notified that you were considering another $500,000 to continue with your own high-to-high rehab program. To date, the city since our involvement, you've done over $800,000 worth of rehab to 25 homes, and as you're well aware, that all goes to your private contractor, and you can do that work. So that's a fairly substantial amount of money, so this next project, we hope to do another 12 to 15 with this current grant funds. And I just wanted to let Tim describe real quickly, because I know he went through the process when we went through it, and applied for the grant, it's been over a year now, it's been sitting down in DCD, and fortunately finally approved it. But I know that Tim went through the application process with the council before, there was some discussion about targeted areas in the city, so I wanted to make sure that everyone was kinda fresh in their mind what those targeted areas would be. Tim, would you wanna kinda review those?
Well, in previous grant, we had targeted wards three, five, and nine. This time, we have two, four, six, and nine. And it's rather a bit of a lengthy process to select these wards, sit down, work with the city, and we have to do a demographic study, see how many homeowners are in those areas, how many are eligible, and also what else is the city doing in those particular wards? And that's all part of the mix that they, for the approval, and we were sort of lucky they did a quick notice on this thing and got it approved, and we got all four of the wards in this time. I try to spread it out as much as possible, but sometimes they will chip one or two of them off. They like to try to focus in any of the narrow area, but, so we got, let's say, wards two, four, six, and nine in this grant. And we've already started the intake process, have three people interview, and they're working on their applications, and we'll continue working on them as we go. And here are copies of our professional service agreement, and the signage really here in Winston, and I might come over and pick them up.
And our B is approximately about 16% of the total grant, and that's based upon how many units it picked on. And we projected between 12 and 15 units, as I said, given the amount of money that we have to work with and what we've been averaging traditionally in the cost of projects in the past.
Okay. Well, I know we haven't seen the proposals, but it's just, you know, these people have been doing it for the past, since we began this. Any questions? You guys have any questions for them? I'm making a motion, will we accept their rehabilitation program, professional services?
Ister?
Yes.
Kristine?
Yes.
Bartello?
No.
Trup?
Yes.
Todd's not here, like, do you wanna address the line of credit for the wall, Jim, or you just wanna hold that to the next meeting?
Well, no, I didn't get it started. We've been in contact with Northern National Bank, we have a line of credit that we never used on phase one of the river project. This next phase is, of course, to repair the MVP wall, which had the blowouts in 2001 during the flood, and we wanted to use that line of credit to pay the bills until we take and have the project completed, and of course, we'll just pay a lot of credit back. Todd, talk to, oh, it's a gentleman, Mr. Chris here, and we didn't wanna mix up, so we have line of credit and we have another account that we used for phase one. Because of audits, Todd recommended not to take and dirty the waters that were open there, use this line of credit that way, because when the audit comes down, we're not mixing projects across. That's why it was gonna be handled that way.
I think you have to keep them separate, yeah.
Right. Yes, which direction were we gonna build with the money we already have with the $30,000? Use the line of credit to use that, or are we gonna, it's not really sold on this ready rock. I was looking at it the other day, it looked like it was pushing a little bit there, like a tree, it was going away from the ground a little bit there, the road, going over the wall.
No, it's just apparently the way you were looking at it, because that stuff doesn't...
Just $400,000, that'd take us 100 years of $30,000 blowouts to pay that kind of money.
Well, that, I don't know where you got the $400,000, I didn't see that.
So, place to finish and install a ready rock, and hook it in, $391,000?
And what was it, one hundred foot?
670 feet, that's wrong. They told you not...
That's 420.
Okay, so what's the current price now?
About $275, round figures.
And $300,000?
Yeah.
$300,000, that's one of 10 times more than the other way, fixing it.
That was fixed in 2000, or excuse me, 1997, blew out. And then, you just wanna keep fixing it every couple of years out of your plan of tax?
Rather than finance, you know, $300,000, we already financed $100,000 volume P locks last year, so...
But didn't you see where it was so critical? Julie Broden brought it to our attention, it was so critical, it said he was gonna flood?
Yeah, fix it, but not just that $300,000.
So you wanna patch the flood wall, it's so critical for the...
The Army Corps of Engineers recommended, yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion. Your motion is to accept the line of credit.
You use the line of credit with Northern National Bank.
A second.
Kristine?
Yes.
Bartello?
It's Chris Lee, and we're responsible.
Trup?
No.
Ister?
Yes.
Alcohol waiver, New Year's Eve, America's Host Company, Kevin?
Yeah, America's got, all of us need, is there a resolution, Brad, you need tonight, or you need a...
Yeah, just saying that we're allowed to...
Can we do that in a resolution?
Yeah.
That's what it means, our commission, move that airport down there for the New Year's Eve break. I think we do a resolution.
Yes, but that's affecting the New Year's Eve celebration.
Part of it, part of it. They came to us and asked us, because other groups aren't gonna do it, they asked us if we'd be interested, and we said, yeah, because we have extra permits to use.
We have to give the okay for them to do that for the rest of the... I'll make a motion that we...
Resolution is we're allowed, America's Host Company, to take part in the celebration.
We have, Edward, stuff like, Americans bring their racing on the party.
Sorry.
Bartello?
Yes.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Kristine?
Yes.
Approval of pay void invoices, vouchers payable, $116,52129, general funds, $75501 liquid fuel, so I'll make that form a motion in seconds.
Trup?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
No tax honoration, Board of Health Resolution, declare public nuisance. Are you guys, is everybody able to list the seven properties?
Yep.
I'm not familiar with a lot of the, 1031, is that Harry Hunter's place, or...
No, that was just bought by God, Philadelphia, and I thought that, I didn't think that, you know?
I don't know, I'm not...
He just bought a whole bunch of properties in Sunbury and Shamook, and that was one of them.
My boy's list.
Well, the redevelopment, I went down the list, but I thought we took 1031, we had the last meeting, Jim? 1031 Packard, that last meeting, when he, that, said that guy from Philadelphia just bought that?
Oh, yes, that is, up on the side of Harry Hunter's. It's on the north side of there, Harry Hunter's.
Yes, in our fact, we just didn't, in the city hall here, I mean...
We don't like that on the business list, if he just bought it.
No, he just bought it.
We wanted a letter to see, I guess we turned it, let's, I'm gonna recommend we change that.
I think it's at the end here.
Yeah, let's just cross that off, number six, so we have 416 South Fourth, 152 Bain Bridge, 245 Chestnut, 237 Pine, 1036, 1038 Lion Street, 1008, 1010 Edison Avenue.
Mr. Rhodes, 152 Bain Bridge, isn't that the home where the parents passed or something?
Yes, that's correct. The last contact we had, nobody wants to know, it went to property. I gave, showed else, I got all the information for the redevelopment, I have a little sketch on it, what I have in front of me, so...
The other day, we were down in the power stall, they were actually in there working or something, all right? The water's been shut off.
Yeah, water's off, property's abandoned. There's a gentleman that goes down and cuts grass, and he said he's not doing that anymore because everyone wants to...
All we're doing by established, of course, this just lets us get moving on the process, so if somebody's, if somebody's down there salvaging or something, then we'll be able to work with it.
There has been a company that has for at least five years, when the gentleman passed away.
And the southern one, 1036, 1038, is that the one on Lion Street with the big tree down in the backyard?
Yes.
That's been like that for a while.
Yeah.
And that's, I think somebody just bought that, I was told, that one's was sold too?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Well, again, as I said, if somebody's working with us, that they just want, this gets it off the, gets it moving forward, so I'm gonna take 1031 off, just, and my motion would be to accept the other six.
Ister?
Yes.
Kristine?
Yes.
Bartello?
No.
Trup?
Yes.
Uh, any discussion on anything? Kinda do that rapid announcements, rapid media announcements, we have two, two announcements to make.
I have some...
Megan Becker has her light, hand up, go ahead.
I had two items to bring up from Old Town Committee, from SRI. We have two requests, and one was, we, Lori Johnson had brought up something a few meetings ago about Third Street and the street cleaning schedule, and how that was conflicting with business, and I also, we just had a complaint the other day from another business along that street, and how, in Old Town, we're talking about bringing business back to the downtown, and how we want to try not to interfere with business, and we'd ask that the council consider again changing the time of the street cleaning, just on that Third Street section that has all the bars that are open until 2:00 in the morning, to allow them to be able to conduct business and not have to injure people for parking issues.
I sort of remember that conversation, I don't remember what the result was.
We're working on that. But we're still, I mean, we're, we're just a couple of feet from a parking lot, that's the only thing, when we're changing the signing and the routine of our street and the police department, it's to compensate therefore a half, what, 150 feet of street chief? I talked to him and all that stuff, and it's just, it just doesn't...
What time, what time does a street cleaner usually go by?
Well, now, if I...
One, two.
If I could make a statement here, Kevin, you did say at the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting, that it's, it's parking ordinance, not a street cleaning ordinance.
Not a street, you're right, you did say that. But, um, what we're trying to do, which we, we try to help out the businesses on Market Street. I mean, we changed Market Street around a couple of years ago because of the fact of, you know, the Edison and Peppermint Lounge, because they're still open, too. Well, we're, yeah, we're just about done. We got another four weeks of street cleaning, and we're done with it, if we ever get the street, uh, sweeping back, that is, and, you know, we're just letting the parking go here coming up. See what we can do for next year, that's all I can say. I mean, we're looking, we're looking for 100-foot, 150-foot section for a couple of cars with a parking lot just right around the corner, you know what I mean? Is that what we talked about, Chief?
We did, but that's the issue with Danleys Parking Lot, the city parking lot next to Danleys is there. I got a complaint last week from somebody from Laughter's, and that was my discussion to them, of why aren't you parking in the one's parking lot?
I think, if I can speak to that, part of it is, a lot of the people who are getting ticketed, that are actually, it's actually, a lot of it's not just patrons, but employees who are, have the complaint because they want to be able to park within eyesight of the doorway when they leave, and other people feel that way too, you know, you don't wanna walk a long distance to places that are unlighted at that hour of night. So that's a big, I think, impetus for why the request was put in by a couple of different people, mostly female bartenders, so...
Megan agrees that we should be more proactive. It's only 150 feet, it's 500 feet.
From Laughter's to...
We still should be taking, and where we can, to go through this.
I agree 100%, and I'll say, we'll say, talk on it, that's all I can say. I understand what you're saying, I fully agree. If it was my daughter coming out of that bar at night, I would be concerned myself. I wouldn't want to walk down the street to a parking lot, far from it. We'll see what we can do, we'll see, I promise you, we'll see.
Thank you very much.
So we all said, we're gonna need them, yes, ma'am?
Um, I don't know if you can help us or not, but I live between Raspberry Avenue and the railroad track on South Fourth Street. The gas company dug up the street, they put new gas line in, and they filled it, they came back, they filled it again, and we've been after them to come back a third time and put more patch in. It has sunk down about four inches. My neighbor got out of her car and literally fell out onto the street. It has come down so far, and we've talked to them about coming back and putting in patch, they did between Raspberry Avenue and Chestnut Street, but we can't get them to come back and fill in between Raspberry and railroad tracks. And we've got some major holes.
I'll make a phone call tomorrow on that. They are gonna repaint that whole street, that when they're done with this whole project, so it's gonna be a brand new street, but...
But that won't be till spring, well, it's not, I don't think it's gonna be till now. But, well, yeah, they, I know they have approval on around because they just fixed it up on Highland and Ray Street, but they dug, they're on around, putting that, filling for winter. But you're between Raspberry and South Fourth Street? And railroad tracks, okay. How well, put up on calling it firsthand, what?
It's a big area.
Uh, the whole...
Oh, they got the whole street tore up, yeah, through there.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's three or four sections, and they took care of some of them, but it's like they're filling it in, and then it sinks down again, and they're filling it in, but we have a lot of big trucks that come in and out of Oaks', and they come over that way, so they push it down, and we've got some deep hole there.
Yeah, and probably not bring a lot of stuff, because you figure they're gonna redo the whole street eventually.
What they do, they wait till it settles and they come back in. They have a three-day crews to do this. They have the first crew comes in to dig, and then they have a second group, and then it just temporarily fills it, and then they bring a third crew in, and, you know, they put the final, fill it. I'll make a phone call tomorrow.
When they dig out a sidewalk, are they responsible for replacing the sidewalk, or is that the owners?
I think that's their responsibility, unless it's requested by the owners itself, then the owners are gonna be responsible to replace it, but don't worry about that, I'm not pushing.
Okay, because they did dig up my neighbor's sidewalk.
Yeah, that's where we did it here in the Sonic Temple, too, dug that all out and put an asphalt in, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Questions? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Miss Speck. I do have a couple of concerns that I'd like to adjust, because the year is coming to an end, so it's basically a follow-up on some of the things that have been discussed. And I wanted to start with Councilman Bartello. Entertain me if you can, please. How long have you been in office?
Since 2010.
All right, so that's approximately three years now. This is about the third time I have asked Council, why hasn't Bartello and Snyder's picture been put on the website? When I go to the website, it seems like everyone's department in City Hall, there's a picture of their supervisors and a picture of their staff. I find this, to me, either it's falling under discrimination, but there's something wrong that these two councilors' pictures are still...
There's no conspiracy, they just didn't have their picture taken. In their beginning, when they came in, they were told to have their...
If they can answer, if they turn a picture, they can go on.
And they didn't do it, and they just haven't had it, I mean, we can take their picture with a camera, that's fine.
You can take the picture right now?
We certainly, I can right now, but we can certainly take it if they want it.
I, I still...
It's no conspiracy, Regina.
I didn't say it was a conspiracy. I did not say it was a conspiracy, I don't know what it is.
And I pictured, I pictured stuff...
Well, that's the answer, that's why.
That was taken in 2003, I mean...
You know, I, I, all I have to say is, when you are the administration, and you're the mayor, and you're the department, that's not a good excuse, so we'll leave that alone. Thank you very much for that answer, that's one of the things I wanted to follow up on. I did have some questions regarding the grant for the $200,000 on the cameras, but I guess that Mr. Snyder would be best to answer that. All right. I also wanted to follow up on the committee of the redevelopment authority, and what is the status of, or their achievements that they've done? What have they done, or have they achieved anything since you appointed them?
Redevelopment Authority, every one of these new homes that were selling on auction, every one of these properties that were tearing down, that's all the redevelopment authority. They meet every month, it's a public meeting, you're welcome to come to the meetings, that's how the six properties we just voted on, that's where they came from. This might be the most active, next to SRI, probably the most active positive thing going on in the city right now.
And with those meetings, that means you're able to tell us how much money has been made to date for, for those auctions?
If I had that in front of me, I could.
Okay, that would be something that hopefully...
The last one, we got 21, and seven, 28, and...
Was 20.
What'd that third one go for? Somewhere near over 30.
107,000, I think, and 5,000.
Around 33, 34,000 here. But I don't have that in front of me, so, we can tell you that, yes, and if I could say, come immediately, what did it mean?
First Thursday.
First Thursday, right, Ma.
Um, also, it is my understanding that each council member is to write a report, a written report, in respect to the affairs of their department. Has that been done by each council member? And is it available?
A written report to who?
To you, sir.
For what reason?
To report what they're doing in their apartment. You did delegate, you assigned the apartment to them, and they are delegated responsibilities that they're accounted for, and they're supposed to write a report, that's a law.
And they...
I did a lot of research on this, I'm not saying that if you have...
As Joe said, every month, there's reports that are turned in here, every department has reports.
All right, so I'm trying to find out if that's available?
Seen them in city hall, yep.
Thank you very much. All right, I also would like to follow up on an assessment fee, is there an assessment fee for licenses for dealers and collectors of junk in the city?
That's pretty miserable for...
All right.
Business license through the municipal...
Trash holders. We don't deal with any trash in the city.
So anyone that's working in the city of Sunbury that has a truck and says that they're a disposable trash company, that's under the municipal authority? You don't collect money, issue licenses, and they don't need a mercantile fee assigned to them? All right.
Not in the ordinance.
Not in the ordinance. I used that ordinance really good today, five hours. Um, okay. I wanted to go back to asking the mayor if Councilman Bartella has committed a crime. Has he been accused of corruption? And has he committed a crime in the position that he was in and is hopefully still in, has overseer in the code office?
I have no idea what you're talking about, I'm not answering.
I asked if he committed a crime, sir.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
You have taken away the responsibilities that the voters have elected him in office for.
No, he still has his...
And, no, he made, uh, Mr. Truup, Councilman Truup, uh, head over the, uh, uh, code office and took the man's access to the department away.
He has access to the department to dispose of several employees.
He doesn't have a key like you do to enter the department, does he?
I don't have a key to the city hall, I don't have a key to that office at all.
You know...
I do not have a key to that office, I am not a liar. I think you're really stereotypical, I don't accuse that federal office in the city hall.
You are calling yourself this, I didn't call you like...
What's your next question, ma'am?
I am asking questions.
What's your next question? I didn't get a key.
I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't get an answer to that question, so I'm asking...
I said I'm not answering it.
Did he commit a crime?
I ain't answering.
Has he been accused of being corrupt in his office?
He was, what he was accused of, when he, when he lost some of that responsibility is, is, is fact, that's an evidence.
What's the fact, sir? What fact?
It was over personnel issues.
No one gets fired for that.
You don't know what they were.
Well, that's all right, it'll come out publicly. Excuse me, ma'am, he didn't get fired. I didn't say he got fired.
Let's move on, go ahead.
Let me take a deep breath so that I can get attacked by everybody.